Good evening, everyone. Today is May 16th, 2023. It is 5:15 PM, excuse me, 5:16 PM. We are starting our workshop meeting here at 100 Polk Avenue, Cape Canaveral, Florida, City Hall Council Chambers. I call this meeting to order. And this time, I'd like for city manager, would you please lead us in the pledge?
To the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis, councilmember Callum, Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
This is the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you again for all joining here. So we're going to be going through a couple of really one discussion item broken up into two parts. If you've got any comments, we ask that you do fill out a public comment card. Those can be provided in the foyer when you walk in. But if you do want to say something, you can go ahead and come up now and we can fill out the card later. So at this time, public participation is open. I don't have any cards up here with me. Seeing none. Just to confirm, we are not, I do not need to ask digitally right online because this workshops present. So if folks do, I don't see anyone on. So if you are listening from home and you would like to participate, please raise your hand. I will unmute you and you will have three minutes. Seeing none? Yes, sir. Hello?
Also the Brevard County Affordable Housing Councilmember. So I looked at what you were doing with affordable housing and it was listed 12 times in your strategic workshop, which is very nice to see that. It's very nice to see you guys leading by example and seeing that in your blue sky and you're really working on affordable housing, what your CRA can do and how to get money from federal, state and different things. Very good job, guys. Thank you. And I'm proud of you residents here. I love what you're doing with community engagement as well. Out there, it really felt like a small community. You're almost like this doesn't feel like government, so great job and please keep it up and don't let that die.
Hey, thank you. I have your name here. It's Robert Klimkowski. And welcome to Cape Canaveral. We're so happy you moved here to call it home. If you need anything, this council perhaps ready to support in any way. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Seeing none? No other public comments? We will go ahead and close that portion of the meeting. And this time, we're going to go into our discussion items. One, A and B. We'll start with A. And I think I'll pass it to our city manager if it could be helpful.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As we've done for the last few years, SGR has provided the facilitator services for us at our retreat, Doug Thomas. And Doug prepared this report. And I think the good thing about this is we're not only learning Doug, but we're also learning how we want to do our strategic planning retreats. I think they get better and better each year. And this meeting here, I think we'll prove that out. We did contact Doug today and he apologizes that he would not be able to attend remotely, but obviously he's available if there's any questions on his draft summer report. Very similar to the format that he did in previous years. He goes over the high level overview of things that have happened in the city since the last retreat. He talks about the perceived differences among the council members and they're all listed in there in the first few pages. Then he moves on to the SWOT analysis. He did a SWOT analysis with council. He did a SWOT analysis with staff. All of that is reported in there. This is just a repeat of things that were presented at the retreat. He talks about the vision statement and the fact that we adopted a new vision statement just this year as a result of our revisioning efforts, which I think we all are in love with that vision statement. We intend to get a lot of mileage out of that. The mission, vision and value statement didn't change much or didn't change at all, actually. The values were, a couple of words were tweaked, but the mission statement didn't change at all. Then he began to move into the strategic plan pillars and proposed statements. So those are the multimodal pillar, the sense of place pillar, resilience, community engagement and economic vitality. Same pillars as we had previous years. And then all the projects that were discussed at the remainder of the retreat are all grouped by those pillars. And these are the projects that we had finished or voted on approved in previous years. Some of them have finished. Some of them are still ongoing with updates. They were all reviewed at the retreat and they're all realist in here by pillar. Continuing with Doug's report, we moved through all of that into the new items in the retreat. There are six new items that were proposed by staff and that's where I want to spend most of the time talking today. And lastly, the retreat follows up with the city council's blue sky projects and initiatives, which we have as an attachment five. We want to make sure we capture everything council said at the blue sky stuff as accurately as possible. So that's Doug Thomas's draft report. I know you've all had it for several days now. And if there are any questions, we'll be glad to make note of them. There's no official action to be taken on this tonight. This is just a workshop. If there's any feedback on the draft report from Doug Thomas, we will take it back to Doug. And the official action will happen at the June council meeting. We'll be asking city council to not only approve this report as amended, but also the projects that we agree on tonight too, as they may be amended. So Mayor, at this time, I'm looking for any feedback from the council on Doug Thomas's draft report.
Thank you very much. And just so we're on the same page, the agenda item, the report is numbered one through 18, right?
Yes, sir.
So those 18 pages, the first thing is, well, first I'll say thank you for getting this together. This is a first review as a council and the hope is to bring it back and finalize it next month.
Yes, sir. And we're going to get into more of the meat and potatoes of all of this in the following attachments in the workshop.
Counsel, any comments or anything on the draft proposal? Thing that jumped out at me was that there are no, the community engagement pillar, was there anything that we could fit in there?
As far as a new project?
Yes, or an existing one that maybe has some overlap. The existing community engagement projects are on page 13. And so we've got the educational video series. The original budget was $12,000. The current and projected cost is $12,000 at the bottom of page 13. And then
That's continuing.
That's, it's ongoing.
Yes, sir.
And fiscal year '22, '23. What does that last bullet mean?
It's going to be in, it's in this budget and it's continuing this budget year. We'll also put it in the next budget year. John, you've already got that programmed in for next year, the same amount, right? We just plan to continue that every year.
This falls under the videos we're seeing fantastic at the community center. I think we've seen some of Zach, we've seen some.
Yeah, we just did two more. They're in the editing phase right now and it's about the Brevard Aquarium.
Great. So that budget would support roughly four to six video. I mean, do we have a number of videos?
Zach, could you come up and speak to that? Whichever one, it doesn't matter.
What does that get us in a lot less words?
So hello? So we use a production company called Balance for Earth and we get a really great deal through him. He's charging us about $2,000 per video. He raised his rate a little bit because of inflation, but it's generally between about $2,000. And really, it could be more than that. It just depends on the exact length of the video that we want. We tend to make the videos shorter just because modern content consumption, people like shorter things. The videos that we produce through him are generally a minute, a minute and a half. And then, but stuff like the State of the City video will obviously be longer just because it needs to by its nature. So probably about six videos could be made through that. Not bad.
That's great. Yep. And that sounds like for, that's an existing thing that's happening. And so when I talked about no new anything, you know, just didn't want a blind spot in community engagement, the reality is, is this is ongoing and that's happening. So what we're looking at doesn't, on the bottom of page 15, that doesn't mean we're not doing anything there.
Correct. And these are budgetary impacts to community engagement. Obviously, we've got a staff that's dedicated to community engagement.
Yes.
All the time.
We also produce videos in-house now too via Amy. She makes a great series called The Space Between, which is working on, I think we've done over five videos recorded and released about three, actually maybe six now with the aquarium. But we have a very cool series coming out about the aquarium. It's a 14-minute video. Supposed to be about three, but the presenter that came was just so good that he had really good questions and answers. So those have been working out really well. And we film those on the balcony at C5. We plan to have guests coming. We have one, we have a guest coming next week from the National Weather Service to talk about the new hurricane season coming up, how to be prepared. So that'll be another one posted. So we have an internal and external means of videos.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do we like this draft report? Is there anything that we want to comment or say? That was one thing that I, to make sure.
I think it's great and how it's divided into different pillars that gives us, you know, an idea of what and where and how and who. And I think it's really good that it's done this way. It's, it's very, has a lot of information and that's what we mean. Very good.
And Mayor, if I may, obviously, any decisions we make and the remaining attachments that would revise the draft report will be reflected in the revised draft report that's presented to you in June.
Should we move to that now?
It's probably a good idea unless there's any questions.
We can come back to it. Any questions at this moment? If so, yes, let's do that. Oh, yes, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond has a question.
I want to talk about Cherry Down Park. This has been going on for a long time. And I think we might need to make a decision either if we want it or not. And I think it's time. We've been talking about this, I think for about the last 10, 12 years, about getting Cherry Down Park. And right now, it's being run by the county. And I know a lot of residents have told me, I've heard the pros and cons. And I've had residents talk to me about why we should keep it a county park versus a city park. And I think we have a lot of responsibility in our parks now and I think we're doing a great job. And this is a county park and I think maybe it's best to just walk away and say, it's time because we haven't been able to secure it. And it looks like the county doesn't want to give it to us. I mean, it's been a long time now.
Well, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
We are currently in the middle of negotiations with the county on one issue relating to parking there. And city attorney and I were just talking about this this afternoon. We'd like to get a little more clarification from the county's latest draft on the parking point. And then I want to give that feedback to the council to see if anything's changed there. But at that point, I was already planning to ask the council if there's a desire to proceed forward with this, once we get that point clarified. So maybe another month, we can have that discussion. If that's okay?
Okay with me. It's been ongoing for a long time. So I think that we need to make that decision, either that we're going to move forward on it or we're going to let it go.
Mayor, perhaps that could be a discussion item in the neck of the June council meeting? Would you like to do that?
No. I'm fine with that. I think we took it up, it seems like a couple of years ago. But yes, it would be, it would be good. That way we can all get on the same page and figure out what we want. Because I certainly got comments on Cherry Down. I think it's not so much about owning the park as much as it is about getting it into an end result that, that we think the citizens of Cape Canaveral should have. And unfortunately, there has been some improvements to the park compared to, I guess, five, six years ago. But the potential there is great. And I think we got some lessons learned on what happened in the city of Satellite Beach, which is second movers advantage, I guess, that we have to watch. And yes, I'd love to hear, talk further on Cherry Down at a future meeting.
Mayor, do we have consensus from the council on that point for a June discussion item? I know there's two, three. Okay, thank you.
Let's do it. Yes, thank you. Good idea.
Okay, I'm ready to move forward unless there are any questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next attachment is attachment two. And there are five attachments. We've already gone through one. This is attachment two, and this is an update on the previously approved projects from previous strategic planning retreats. So some of these were multi-year, some of these were just last year. But these are the things that were already approved. We present them here just so we can keep them top of mind as we're doing our planning for projects going into this next fiscal year. So I just want to review them very quickly. The administrative zoning of non-performing parcels is ongoing. The sheriff's department rooftop solar is scheduled for fiscal year '23, '24. The Canaveral City Park concession stand, that is actually still scheduled for this year. That's why there's no green block there. It's in this current year. But we put it in an update there because since the retreat, we learned that the original budget of $200,000 won't be enough for the, what I call it, the drop-in place concession stand that we want. It's actually going to be $250,000. We believe we can make that happen still this year. And it's not complete yet, but we would just want to update the council on that. The Canaveral Drainage Basin improvements than Central Ditch, that is still projected to go through fiscal year '25. Center Street Basin improvements, of course, that is top of mind for all of us. As soon as we can get that going, the better. That's for fiscal year '23, '24. The plan is nearing design now. We've got the Center Street Mixed Use Development and that is currently going through the Planning and Zoning Board. We should have something to the council, Dave, in July on that. Okay. No earlier than July. Turning the page, we've got the Clarifier Rehabilitation Project that was just awarded by city council at the May city council meeting. 1.4 million of ARPA funds. The contract has been executed. We got the Cape Center 95% complete. This year will open. The educational vigil, educational video series, we, Zach just talked about that. It's ongoing. And then we've got the FDOT project. And of course, this is the FDOT budget, not the Cape Canaveral budget. We're looking for some action there to happen beginning in '25 and finishing in '27 for the realignment of International Drive. Moving on, we've got the five-year solar street light upgrade initiative. We did plug it in for that 162,000 for fiscal year '23, '24. If council wants to do that, that's an action item on this, on this agenda tonight. We're going to be talking about advancing that five-year plan to get it all done now. More on that, stay tuned as we go forward tonight. Oak Lane improvements, still scheduled for in this current budget year, $800,000, 15% complete with design. Then we've got the Presidential Streets Master Plan Implementation Phase. We really won't know how much each street's going to be. We're throwing it as a placeholder, a million dollars each one of those years. And of course, much of that is CRA funds, grant funds, anywhere we can scrape up some money funds to make that happen. We don't really want to do any tax increases to make that happen, of course. But we want to see the Presidential Streets become developed in accordance with that plan, which is not yet complete. Emily Horn is working on the one-way idea. $300,000 is planned for '23, '24 though, in survey and design outreach. Then we've got the Therm Boulevard improvements, $1.4 million. That's been kicked back a couple of years. It's still proposed to be kicked back to '24, '25. That's been in the CIP for, you've seen that a few times. Veterans Memorial Park redevelopment expansion is in there for $310,000. We are going to be seeing another item that will touch the corner of Veterans Memorial Park for an LID project to take stormwater out of that area, the streets. And that's it for the previously approved, all the old previously approved projects that council has already seen and we've already budgeted for. And Mayor, if there's any questions that we have to answer, and if not, we can move on to the next attachment.
One quick question, 20, the column fiscal year '23, '24, the total for that column?
John, do you have a calculator on you?
Well, is it? I mean, it's six, 1.5, 2.0. It looks like right around $3 million.
And yeah, and some of it's ARPA, some of it's CRA. There's different, different pools of money being, that's coming from.
I think the next one is a copy and paste to this, but it's not filled out right?
You mean attachment three?
Attachment three, yes.
No, attachment three is the new stuff that we proposed at the retreat.
Okay.
The stuff that we would normally rank, but we're doing that tonight if we're going to rank them or decide when we want to do them, where we want to do them. Everything in attachment two is the stuff we've already approved in previous retreats.
Got it.
It's background information.
I just have one question about the Oak Lane improvements. I understand about the stormwater, but are we also putting in the reclaimed water that was questionable before? And I'm curious, I know a lot of the residents on the different streets, they paid to have the connection put in. What about the people on Oak Lane? Will they have to pay something for the connection for the reclaimed water? And how much is that per home?
Jeff, if I, if I, Mayor, if I could call Jeff up to speak to that.
Please.
My selection, Jeff, is that we were going to bring the utility to the entrance of Oak Lane so that it's available to come down. But from that point, it would be paid for on a per-user basis? Or is that per-user basis? Is that correct? We're making individual connections then, you're saying? Or just running the line?
We're running the line.
Okay, so anybody who wants to connect to it would have to get a shut off in a box. And they would pay for it at that time? Okay. So it will be available and paid for by the residents? Okay, any other questions?
Not for me, counsel anymore.
Okay, moving on to attachment three. This is, this is the meat of it. Attachment three are the new projects and council is asked to, if you could scroll just a little bit more, you know, council is asked to weigh in on these about, A, do you want to do them? B, when do you want to do them? And we're going to be recording that consensus in these blank boxes here to help. I have prepared attachment four, which is the same thing with city managers' recommendations on it. So if you can, Mia's going to show it right there. That's the blue. Those are my recommendations. You can switch back and forth between attachment three and attachment four to see kind of where I'm thinking we should be based on what I think is achievable, discussions I've had with the city council and staff about when this can be done. So Mayor, if it's okay, we'll just start reading through the first one.
Yes, sir.
On attachment three, I'm looking at a blank slate here. City of Cape Canaveral Community Center, C5 Energy Storage System. This is the one that we recently approved. The council approved the list of projects for the Hazard Mitigation Grant funding of $75,000. It would impact the city IM fund $35,000 for a total of $110,000. What this gets us is the energy storage system at the, the C5, which to make it much more resilient and especially in a post-storm situation where we've got power there to run this facility, perhaps many people are out without power. There's a place they can go. We could have some electricity. We can charge phones and refrigerated water. I don't think we can run an elevator off of that, but we can certainly have several amenities because this battery storage system is there. Zach presented this at the retreat. I don't know if there's any questions about it, but the council really liked this idea. The question is, where do we want to put it? I'm proposing we put the $110,000 in the '23, '24. Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, but that hazard mitigation grant funding has to also be expended in that period too, right? So we're kind of time bound on this to '23, '24 if we want to get the grant funding. Mayor, any comments on that one from the council?
Total cost is $100,000, the estimate today. And we're saying that, you know, 30, 35%, $35,000 is what we would pay. Does it, would, with the grant flow, how does that, I guess, cash flow work? Do we have to put the money out? Because there's a few of these here. And then is it like a reimbursement?
Typically.
Okay, so we need to expense it in that year. So we need to account for that. My comment on that is if we don't get the grant, what do we do?
Are we? Zach, could you prepare a response to that in the item that we presented? If you did, did you have it on top of head and where we were going to go?
Yeah, if we didn't get it, we would, it would just be in the budget and we would rely on the IRA reimbursement of 30%. So we'd pay more than we would for the hazard mitigation funding, but we still wouldn't be paying the full cost at the end of the day because we get a 30% reimbursement from the Inflation Reduction Act. So that was going to be the backup.
Have you heard anything about the grant process at this point, Zach? Any updates?
They extended the grant deadline to August, but we're still going to put in, we're still going to submit around when the original deadline was of May 41st. Just want to get it done. So we set ourselves an internal goal of June 9th to get the four projects that council previously approved to allocate, one, nine and four, by June 9th. And then we would hopefully hear back, you know, within this calendar year about getting the award or not.
That's great. And so these are all grant funded.
Partially, yeah.
70%.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
Isn't it true that we have a contingency fund for just this type of a thing? For example, just in case, just in case we wouldn't get the grant. I'm sure we will. I have complete faith, but this is the reason why we do have a contingency.
True, and we would come back to council for that.
Well, thank you very much, John.
So Mayor, I'm just looking for consensus on which fiscal year? We're proposing '23, '24 for this one. Got two heads, not?
Yeah, the big, that, yes.
Okay.
I like that.
We'll record consensus for '23, '24 on the C5 Energy Storage System. And I'm ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
All right, next one is C5 Resiliency Upgrades. This is the metal flood barriers and the lightning protection. Zach, you're not going go far, I think. Let's, funding sources, CRA, total cost, we've got $76,000. Can you talk about the difference between the system that's there and the system that's proposed?
Yeah, that's a good point. Just to be clear, the building does have a lightning protection system. It wasn't built without one. The one that we're proposing would just enhance it by a lot, by a lot more. We have four of these systems in place called the CMCE devices, one of which is on top of this building, one of which is Nancy Hansen Recreational Complex on a tennis court light, and two at the water reclamation facility. These devices are active lightning protection systems opposed to like a traditional lightning rod, which just will take a lightning strike and ground it hopefully. This system actually suppresses lightning because it drains the atmosphere with charge and prevents lightning from making a ground connection within its sphere of influence. This would protect the building. The thing is really appropriate because the lightning protection system that has now could protect the building and its assets, but it couldn't protect something like, say, the splash pad out front with the people on it. This could because it has a sphere of influence that would extend beyond the perimeter of the blue line about a few hundred feet.
And Zach, not being an expert in these systems, is there any conflict with, you've got a repelling system and an attracting system?
No, no. The system is just simply grounded like a normal lightning rod and the charge that drains out of the atmosphere goes down safely to the ground.
Okay. And again, Mayor, this is $76,000 CRA funded because the park is fully within the CRA.
Thank you.
And we're proposing this one also be done in fiscal year '23, '24. Looking for consensus on that.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
About that.
Yes, Councilmember Callum.
About the funding. It's in the CRA, but couldn't the ARPA money be used for that rather than the CRA?
I think the ARPA money is quickly.
Obviously, anything could be.
Obviously, anything could be, ARPA money could be used for just about anything these days, but the lion's share of the ARPA money has all been pretty much designated and delegated to stormwater wastewater projects. And it's pretty, we're pretty much. We may, you know, we may have, there may be some dollars left. For the most part, though, we're not looking, if we have the money in the CRA, we're going to use the money in the CRA because each year you get money in the CRA, you should use it. You have to use it, otherwise, you know, we have to re-obligate it to the next year. And, but it's, it's available this year, so there doesn't, there's no reason to take that money for ARPA, to use it for ARPA, so.
Can you give a catch-up, roll-up summary of ARPA funding in the next financial update, monthly financial update?
Absolutely. And we're probably, probably our, our projects through next year probably will almost, if we could get the projects done for ARPA, probably exceed three million dollars. Maybe more than that.
Could we also get a breakdown of the CRA money? Because I know, didn't we start in the hole with the CRA money because of the?
West Central.
West Central.
Right, we were three, we were three hundred K in the hole last year. And we just moved forward on that, but because of the healthiness of the CRA, we're quickly making that up, we'll probably make that up by the end of this year. So, and the good thing about CRA is, you know, monies could always be carried over. You could run with the CRA, you could run in debt in terms of, you know, a negative balance. But when this CRA expires, it, it has to be zero. You can't be a dollar in, in debt. So, and we're in pretty good shape because our CRA expires in, I believe, twenty thirty-eight, maybe twenty forty-one, but I think, I think twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-eight? Twenty thirty-eight, twenty forty-one. It's a little bit ways ahead of us.
They got adjusted, it's hard to remember now.
Yeah.
But I mean, in the financial update, can we get a breakdown of where the money is and what it's?
The CRA, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-three CRA.
Sure, sure, we could do that.
Any other questions on the C5 Resiliency Upgrades? We spent all the time on the lightning protection. There's also metal flood barriers here. These are the, similar to the metal flood barriers that we installed at the plant. So it's, it's a very quick way and a very effective way to make sure that floodwaters don't enter a building if there's a rising, rising level of water around there. The brackets that hold in the doors, you slide them in there and they put a seal against the door. And Zach, is it like two feet high, three feet high? Three feet high. So it stops water from coming in, and that's another part of the resiliency upgrade for the C5. They're already being used at the plant every time we have a threat of something like this or hurricane. So Mayor, I have recorded fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the C5 Resiliency Upgrades. If there's no other questions, we can move on to Civic Hub Phase Two, Engineered Plans and Construction Phase. Phase One is currently underway, completion times three years. If you look at the City Manager Recommendation, I'm proposing it go out to fiscal year twenty-six. Currently, Kimley Horn is doing their design efforts. I sent out an update today on the Civic Hub where we are. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it yet, but we're, there's testing that's going on and inspections going on right now. That's background information that will be useful in the design. And once we have all that gathered, then the public outreach, the surveys will happen. The community will get involved, getting the ideas for the Civic Hub. Their deliverable date is still September of this year, unless that's changed, Molly. No change on that, right? So we should still see that in September. That's when we will see probable cost of construction for the Civic Hub. So that's why I put in there a waiting cost estimate. We don't know until the public weighs in on this, what kind of amenities you want, how much it's going to cost. However, I am proposing for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we earmark a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for selective demolition and then pushing the remaining funding into twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars in selective demolition would help us do some things if the design warrants it, to remove amenities that we say, we don't want that anymore. We want that gone because that space is going to be used for this. So I'm just saying, you know, what if we say the shuffleboard courts come up? We want those gone, we want to have money set aside in that budget to go ahead and remove them next year. So we're, you know, cleaning the slate, wiping the slate clean in that area for improvements that are going on there. So again, just to rehash it, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is proposed for twenty-three, twenty-four and awaiting cost estimates for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six is my recommendation, sir.
Thank you, the hundred fifteen thousand dollars, is that, where do we see that? Or a hundred fifty thousand? I see one point, one million fifty thousand, I see two hundred fifty thousand for the demolition?
Yeah, where would we propose a hundred fifty come from there, John?
So, Mr. Mayor, what will happen now, since the City Manager has, you know, we had this, we had this meeting and just a week ago or whatever, there was a discussion. So since we're going to go into like more of a demolition phase for the grounds and whatever, then twenty-three, twenty-four will reflect a hundred fifty thousand and we'll adjust the CIP. And City Manager stated, then, you know, we'll have to see what's all involved going forward. But I think what staff will do is just put estimates in the following year, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, an estimate as to what we may spend. We'll have to make a determination there. But the City Manager's saying that a hundred fifty thousand for twenty-three, twenty-four now, he wants us to change that in the CIP and then push everything out.
And funded from what account?
That will, that's the, that's the CRA.
In the CRA?
Yeah.
Yep, I was just making sure that's not a typo, because when I look at the twenty-three, twenty-four year that you're stating, CIP CR2, that's one million fifty thousand, but that's not a typo, an extra zero from a hundred fifty thousand, right?
That's, that's existing CIP.
That, that's, that's the entire.
That's the total project?
And that's, that'll, that'll change.
And that's an old number, we've seen that number for a year now.
And the two hundred fifty thousand is what we budgeted last year?
For the efforts, yes, being expended currently.
This current year, when we say this current year, right now, right now, yeah. That's what we budgeted, and the anticipation is there'll be a ninety-eight thousand dollars just for the design from Kimley Horn and what have you, and then everything will be pushed forward because nothing else behind the ninety-eight thousand is going to take.
But we'll have a design hopefully by the end of the year. That's the deliverable, and we, we don't need to pay anything for that to happen.
It's already budgeted.
That's done?
And the money is still, the good thing is, is the money for the one fifty is, is still could be absorbed by the loan.
Okay.
A hundred thousand, yeah.
So what it is, it, we get a plan approved, we've got some money to do some demolition, and the next year we budget construction dollars. This was supposed to be an intermediate-term project over two to seven years anyways, and it's stretching out, and it's, it's going to take most of that.
I might have missed this. When are we going to have the workshops for the residents to tell us what they would like to have?
Kimley Horn will be doing those once they finish gathering their inspection data. Right now, they're doing testing right now. We've got structural inspections going on at facilities out there, they're doing borings. We suspect there's some artesian wells that are causing some soil condition problems out there. They're doing the testing and the survey work right now. Once that's done, then they're going to go out to the community.
And just to add, Councilmember Kellen, the, some of the out-year's money, like nine hundred fifty thousand, when we were talking about CRA, using ARPA money and says CRA, nine hundred fifty thousand right now is going to be for, going to be ARPA used for that Civic Hub. So that's where some more of the money, the money's at. So that is part of the, that project.
So in short, a hundred fifty thousand this year is what, is what we're trying to decide whether we want?
That's all I'm asking you to commit to at this point. And then we'll know better after September, what the next two years will look like after that.
So we would change CIP CR2 to reflect what he's talking about.
Okay. I, I would like to hold that one, that's, that's me, myself and I, for, for this year. And especially if we, we don't get the grants, the hundred fifty thousand there could, could cover that. But if we paid for the design, we'll have that this September.
Yep.
I would like to make sure we, we do that. To me, the property is valuable the way it sits today. Certainly not as valuable as it could be, but that, that to me would be prudent, especially when I look at the other ones. So that's my comment, is I would say, you recommending this year, I'm saying, move it over.
Well, the, the importance of the, we have to have the design before we can apply for any grants. So that's the reason why, you know, one thing has to be done first. And then also the testing that's going on is important to see what we can do with the property.
Councilmember?
I just had a question. If, if the design is going to be ready by September, how are we? When is the community involvement? How do you have a design without knowing what the?
The design will happen between now and September. The community involvement will happen between now and December. Yeah. So I think, Mayor, your point is, let's, you're asking Council to not approve the hundred fifty thousand dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four, instead leave that a blank, nothing happened in twenty-three, twenty-four, but leave the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six awaiting cost estimate like I have it.
Yes.
Okay, is there consensus for that?
Today, in this draft stage, I mean, that might change. When we get in the whole budget, you know, that might change, but that's, you're, you're on.
So essentially, City Manager Recommendation, except for, don't spend anything in twenty-three, twenty-four. Is there consensus for that, Mayor?
Anyone opposed to that?
I would like to see it go forward for this year.
I would like to, I agree with Councilman Willis. We have the property, and I think this is a project that the community is excited about, and we can see, have great, great potential here. And I think it's something that on A1A that doesn't exist right now. And people are talking to me constantly about how good things are going for Cape Canaveral and how things have really improved. And when they come by, they really are happy for our city, and I am too. I'm very proud of it, thank you.
I just think that with everything that has to be done with the testing and the community involvement and the design, that it might, I mean, if we, you know, we're definitely going to do it, but that hundred fifty thousand could be used for something, you know, that's going to happen now, the, you know.
That's, I feel that there's going to be other uses, but, I mean, we're right at five fifty-eight. I, I think that this is one where it's not an easy yes for, for me, and it sounds like.
So the motion?
And maybe we settle somewhere.
Two and two, it looks like it's two and two, it looks like we're split on that.
We're split. So the motion fails if there was a motion for consensus to not have the hundred fifty. Is there consensus on anything on this item?
I think we should just leave it with your recommendations.
I, I think that, you know, your idea of awaiting cost estimates and waiting, you know, for community involvement and all that is good. I just think that a hundred fifty thousand, right now, when we do have money left from the two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay. Can we get consensus on one way or another on that? I know we're two-two right now.
For which part?
To, well, to say yes with one fifty, to say no, or don't do anything in the first year. We're, we're a stalemate on that.
Do we have a breakdown, like with the hundred fifty thousand? I know you went over briefly, but, I mean, you don't have.
We, we don't know at this point. We're just, we put that in there as a placeholder because we can at least have some forward momentum going into the next fiscal year after that, with having gotten some of it accomplished, possibly keeping some of the costs down. We wouldn't be removing anything that we didn't already program to remove during the design. So if the design comes back and says, hey, leave that racquetball court, hey, leave that shuffleboard court, hey, leave those things, we don't take those out. This is in case the design comes back and say, yes, we want to take some of those things out. We have money to take some of those things out. So the design will inform either way you go, the design rules.
Okay, well, I would be fine with the money staying there as long as we can vote on whether or not we want to spend it to take those things out.
Then we can record consensus for City Manager's Recommendation on that one. Okay, yeah, Council has full control over how much we spend and when we spend it, what we spend it on. Quickly through the other ones, Public Works Solar Array. That is a one-year timeframe, twenty-nine thousand dollars out of General Fund, proposing pushing that out to twenty-five, twenty-six. There are several solar projects we've done and will continue to do. We just think that there are some bigger hanging projects, bigger hanging, that's not a phrase. Some other things we want to do first. So that's why we proposed twenty-five, twenty-six for that one. If there's consensus on that, Mayor? Got two heads, yes, yes?
The sooner the better. I mean, the amount of money, if you were to just run a ROI on taking twenty-nine thousand dollars and putting it there, opposed to twenty-nine thousand dollars in another park or place, you're going to see a very high return on investment there. And so I know the city's doing that math, especially with the new incentives for local governments. So I think we're, that's two years that we're going to overpay for, I think, electricity, and we would have probably paid for itself by twenty thirty easily, or twenty twenty-eight. But, I mean, if anything, I'd like to see that move up to twenty-four, twenty-five.
Is there consensus for twenty-four, twenty-five? Okay, we'll put it there.
Yeah.
Okay, next one is Stormwater Infrastructure GIS Mapping, one-year timeframe, stormwater funded, ninety thousand dollars, recommending do that in twenty-three, twenty-four. Looking for consensus.
On the GIS, yes, mapping, yes, I think that's excellent.
And the last one is Rover Space. This is the portion of Patriots Park, six-month timeframe, General Fund funded for sixty thousand dollars. This is a, a need that we feel we have in this portion on the west side of the city. We've had requests for dog park facilities, and this is the perfect location for it. And we're recommending that that be done in twenty-four, twenty-five, ninety thousand dollars.
So not next year? I'm fine with looking at that.
Okay, we have consensus for that, okay?
All good, yes.
That's all I have for that. Mayor, the last attachment, Attachment Five, is the Council's Blue Sky Strategic Projects. With those, we just recorded in red everything the Council said they wanted to do. We have no problem following the consensus as reported on those items. It includes BEEP, we talked about autonomous vehicles, employee staff retention, Alliance for Innovation, Home Improvement Assistance. We also talked about using the CRA revenue, obviously, for affordable housing. As the gentleman mentioned earlier, that was referenced there. Dressing slum and blight. We've got parking, we, we kind of drifted from restaurants and bar parking to possibly looking into how other cities have implemented paid parking and recorded the consensus there. Basically, we want to continue looking for more information. And then there was a, six items at the bottom there that there was no consensus recorded. So we just keep that in the back of the mind as part of our discussion. Now, what we're looking for here, Mayor, is, is this what the Council wants in the report? This is the way it's going to go into it, just the way it's written, unless there's any changes right now.
I'm, I read it, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is.
Okay, that's all we needed, and that's all we need for the workshop.
I just wanted to add that the parade on A1A was not on A1A, it was on North Atlantic. Because a parade on A1A would not go good.
Mayor, can we look for consensus to change a parade on A1A to a parade on North Atlantic?
Yes.
Or Ridgewood, yeah.
Okay, so we'll change it to A1A, from A1A to North Atlantic or Ridgewood. Is there consensus for that?
Yes, any opposed?
Thank you. Might, might be a golf cart parade. Mayor, that's all I needed for the workshop, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, any final comments? We're going to adjourn the workshop meeting. Seeing none. Six oh five, meeting adjourned.